Session is back in order. It is nine oh five. Senators present, myself, Senator Theresa Ly, Senator Chris Barnett, Vice Speaker Tony Ida, Senator Sabrina Salas Matanani, Senator Sean Gumutato, Senator Vince Bora, Senator Shelley Cabo, and Senator Jesse Luhon. We had called for session to begin at nine, at nine AM. And we need, we've got a very aggressive schedule, so we're gonna go ahead and continue. We were on the matter of Bill forty-eight dash thirty-eight COR. Senator Bora, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And, you know, to finish up on the clarification in regards to the measure I've introduced compared to the previous measure that was passed earlier this term in regards to leave for government of Guam employees, the difference between what we're trying, what I'm trying, what is proposed here is that the GDOE active twelve-month employees mirrors the DOA, they, they follow the DOA policy in regards to the leave where it's four hours per pay period for sick leave and then depending on their time in service, it's four, five, and six hours for annual leave. This measure just focuses on the teachers that, you know, and I've been speaking with GDOE this morning, it's, you know, it's gonna mirror what the permanent teachers, the classified teachers get, which is four hours pay period for sick leave and then seventy-two hours of personal leave. So that was the question that was raised prior to us going into recess.
So it's seventy-two hours of personal leave per school year?
School year, correct. And their limited terms or their contract is from August till May, which is the end of the school year. So.
Thank you. Senator Barnett, you were the one who made the inquiry. Are you fine? Thank you very much. Senator Perez, when we went on recess last night, we were still at, you still had the floor, and you still had an amendment that was still open? You had the question, but you had the floor based on the amendment. Okay. I stand corrected by the clerk. Senator Tadey, you have the floor, ma'am.
Sutus Masin, good morning, Mr. Speaker. I know it's been rough, you know, last night, a late night last night and then going on with this marathon. So I really appreciate the opportunity for the author of the legislation to seek the information that I'm looking for because the last thing I do want is to shortchange or to change a legislation that was previously introduced to ensure that, you know, the government of Guam, the retirees that come back into service, you know, get, get the benefits that we intend, this body's intended to do to entice them to come back because of the shortage. So that being said, sick leave for the rate of four hours per pay period is basically what the norm is for any employee, whether they're, you know, a retiree or not. So they're getting the same benefits. And that was my question. So the other question I have is regarding all the limitations, give me one second while I get my notes, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So regarding all the limitations that, that follow on the, on the sick leave, some of them usually may not be carried over for one fiscal year after which any excess leave has been fortified. You know, all these limited or exemptions from them, is there anything in here that would basically we miss out on? In other words, is there something that we can pull to entice them even more? So my question to the author of the legislation, when they came up with these limitations, was there anything in here that was placed in here that could have not been placed in here? In other words, to allow more of an enticement, a benefit to the retirees?
Do the author you to the question?
Thank you for that question. Mr. Speaker, we're talking with GDOE this morning in regards to the bill as, as proposed. They're, you know, just the, the, like, the way it's written is great. I mean, they're, it's a big enough incentive because before the retirees really only got sick leave. So even just giving them seventy-two hours, in fact, initially, GDU didn't, you know, they weren't really a fan of trying to give personal leave to retirees. But after discussion over a couple of weeks, they're, they're in full support of just that and, 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 you know, the way it's written, it shouldn't discourage any of the retirees to come back.
Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Yes, it does. And then it leads me to the question about Guam Federation of Teachers. Now, if these individual retirees come back, are they still covered under GFT, you know, as representatives, GFT representing these individuals?
Would you author you to the question?
I don't think so, Mr. Speaker, because these guys are limited term. GFT just covers the classified full-time employees.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then again, the last question, the Superintendent of Guam of Department of Education shall establish procedures to implement this section within ninety days of enactment. Now, when they say to establish, we always look at, you know, rules and regulations, you know, provide that triple A process, et cetera. Here, it doesn't seem to do that. Is that the intent for, for the superintendent, just to cover, you know, do his own SOPs moving forward without any concurrence or without any oversight on this particular one on Section D? I mean, sorry, six, number six.
Would the author you to the other question?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, because the, these employees really, August till May, in fact, you know, you see a lot of retired, you know, some who don't necessarily finish out the school year. So we don't wanna create a burdensome process to something that, I mean, I, I get where, you know, I understand where the Senator from Tumuning is coming from, but we're, you know, I think for me, I'm always a fan of just allowing the department to see how they would like to implement it. Obviously, you know, the, the intent is to just mirror, I mean, what's important is how they track it during the school year because it's not gonna be in their same system because there is a rollover of sick leave for the permanent employees. So yes, the intent is for the department to be the one to figure out it, to implement this.
And, and again, I'm sorry, Speaker, the last one is the Board of, the Guam Education Board, have they had the opportunity to approve this as well? Did they provide in testimony from the board?
Would you let you to the question?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the, they didn't, when we put this measure together, we did speak with the board. In fact, this measure was put together after meeting with the board chair and a couple of the board members and when I first took office. And this was the first proposal that they asked me to, to introduce was a leave policy for retirees.
And thank you, Mr. Speaker, and, and thank you to the author of this measure to allow me to ask these additional questions, especially those who are listening this morning. There's quite a few of individuals who are retirees who, who stay at home and, and listen to the legislature and find out what's going on. So this is very helpful for them, you know, maybe make a decision to come back and, and into the school system where we're falling short there. So I greatly appreciate it and the opportunity to ask this. And again, whatever we can do to entice the retirees, because I could tell you, Mr. Speaker, sixty-five is the new forties, you know, that's what they're saying. And people are now not retiring until they're like in their seventies, or they wanna keep working until they're in their seventies. So let's find a way to allow them the affordability to actually come back to work because, you know, it's not always necessarily, you know, you make money, you go out, you tend to spend everything you're making rather than just stay home and, you know, not spend so much on gas and everything else. There's a decision to be made and let's hope that they decide to make the decision to help our schoolchildren, you know, grow and be better people in the community. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the bill, on the bill, any other senators willing to speak on the bill. Senator from Tumuning, so you recognize?
Sutus Masin, Mr. Speaker, good morning and good morning to my colleagues. Certainly rise in full support of this bill. Just gonna repeat a couple of things I said in the public hearing. Had a chance several months ago to stop by with family to grab some, some yogurt land. And there was a group of very seasoned, as the retiring colleague said, very energetic retirees, teachers enjoying themselves on a Sunday. And I got one of my pullovers is what I call them. And so, Chris, get over here. And a lot of them are good friends with my sister who's taught for over forty years. And so they mentioned this issue and the need to restore the ability for retired teachers who come back to teach to be able to accrue sick leave as well. And I mentioned to them, I knew it was being worked on. I know a couple senators in the hall were working on it and, and so here we are. So this is certainly something that is, is definitely very much needed. I believe the report came out earlier in the week, or maybe late last week, that hundred and eighty teachers, which is actually not as bad as it's been in the past, going into this new school year. We've been as high as four hundred from time to time. And so something's working. And certainly, I'm sure several of them that have closed that gap are individuals who are retired, who are coming back to teach once again in the classroom. So yeah, maybe, absolutely maybe true when this bill passes and signed into law, you know, that, that gap may even narrow a little bit more. So congratulations to the school system for schools continuing to pass with even higher grades with regard to inspections. And then, of course, this is one of the gaps as well. One thing I did ask during the public hearing was, is there any chance that when we have benefits and when we have retired teachers coming back, is there any chance that that has any effect on incoming teachers and potentiality for that? First of all, the shortfall is, is quite large right now. But secondly, I was glad that Tim Fadinko from the union reiterated that the school policy and even union policy is, you know, teachers who are not retired get first crack at the classroom. And this is, could never be a supplanting tool to try to save money in terms of benefits and other things that are occurred by, accrued by full-time employees as opposed to retirees. So it's a solid policy and obviously on the floor, there was a lot of work to make it better. So I congratulate the author and I certainly look forward to voting in favor of this bill. Sutus Masin, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, sir. On the bill, gentleman from Tel Aviv, will show you recognize?
Well, thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity this morning to offer my comments on Bill forty-eight dash thirty-eight. It's no secret that a major teacher shortage is existing in the United States. As teachers are leaving the classroom in Guam and across our country, administrators near and far are forced to find ways to fill vacant teaching positions. And I think that we've seen it so far in this thirty-eighth Guam legislature in terms of trying to maybe address this issue. Many of you in this room or watching on YouTube know that many teachers who have decided to change professions, they did so due to a lack of competitive salaries, those educators that were in fear maybe their personal safety on our campuses, or teachers who can more than perceive a, what would probably be conceived as a lack of support from the education stakeholders in their respective school communities from north to south, GDU, GDU Central, and to some extent, maybe right here in this building. Mr. Speaker, Guam needs to turn around this national trend and do it quickly. And I really believe that Bill forty-eight does that. If this bill gets passed, it's obviously gonna need to be executed by the Education Board with their help and the Superintendent of our schools. And yeah, it's gonna take some effort. And why is that important? Because without enough teachers and the support staff they need, the students, as we know, won't receive that instruction that they so desperately need. They're not gonna have access to targeted intensive tutoring to address their unfinished learning. Plenty had to do with the global pandemic that struck the world and our island and, and in our case, the recent storms. And students won't receive the mental health support and experience that the positive school environments that they need would be allowing them to thrive as well. High turnover also creates instability, Mr. Speaker, that disrupts relationships between adults and students and makes it difficult for schools to create those coherent instruction types of plans and to implement new initiatives. And we've seen plenty across the village meetings over the last seven months. I commend the bill's author, Senator Bora, who emphasized the importance of these benefits to include not only that this was one of the first things that the Policy Board had looked to him to advocate, but importantly, when they attended, and we wanna thank a board member, Peter Alexis Ada, for, for being there on behalf of the board at the public hearing as well. Again, I support Bill forty-eight and I ask the author if I can be added as a co-sponsor to this measure. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the time this morning, and thank you again, colleagues.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the bill, any other senator wishing to speak on the bill? The gentleman from Tumuning, you recognize?
Good morning, Mr. Speaker, and good morning, colleagues. Oh, just real short, I commend the, the author for the introduction of this, this, this bill, Mr. Speaker. You know, my mom as well was a retired school teacher and after thirty-five years of teaching, immediately after Department of Education hired her back because, and this was back in the seventies, there was a shortage then. And, and so over the years, it, it continues. But I wanna commend the author, Mr. Speaker, because year after year, you know, we have vacancies and we have school aides that, that cover the classes. And so this, again, goes a long ways to, to help to meet the fourteen points in placing a certified teacher in a classroom. These are professional teachers coming back. And again, restoring them back, I mean, you know, let's not penalize them for, for being retirees. We're asking them to do us a favor. Come on back and teach our students. These are professional teachers who happen to retire, done their years, but we need their services again. So to restore these, these, these benefits back to them, they're doing us a favor, doing our kids a favor. And again, meeting the fourteen points of, of, of the Adequate Education Act. So again, I support the measure. I want to thank the author for introduction of this bill and I asked to be a co-sponsor as well. And I encourage my colleagues to, to vote, vote positively in this, this, this measure. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator, just so you're, you are a co-sponsor to the bill. Any other senator wishing to speak on the amendment? Gentleman from Tel Aviv, will show you recognize?
Goodness, Mr. Speaker, and good morning to the people of Guam watching on our YouTube channel. Happy Tuesday and thank you for the opportunity to rise in support of the measure, which is, as the author had said, one of two measures directed at retirees and assisting them with, helping them ease the load when they make that return to service. The first measure was my Bill fifty-three-eight, which is now Public Law thirty-eight seventeen. The governor signed that into law and in her signing message, she said the bill ensured, the law ensures retirees re-employed by the government of Guam will accrue sick leave in the same manner as active employees, whether they're teachers, corrections officers, police officers, contract hires. And so I really think this measure meshes with the public law previously passed and kind of closes all the gaps. And, you know, in talking with the retirees, it's, it's, it's a, it's a little funny because you have teachers who have recently retired who have absolutely no desire to come back into the classroom. I did a presentation for a retiree recently for about like thirty-six years of service and she was all about, I wanna spend time in the garden, I wanna spend time with the family. And then you have other teachers who are way over their time of service. I know one teacher at an elementary school up the road who has forty-five years of service. And since the last term, we've been waiting to introduce a resolution for retirement, but the problem is she doesn't wanna retire. She wants to keep on teaching. And so for those teachers who have retired and who wanna come back into the classroom to help alleviate the shortage of teachers that we have on the island, any little incentive that we can provide, I think is very critical and is, is a small token of appreciation that we can offer as a body and as a community to, to support these teachers. But it also is a little bit of a balancing act, as the author of the measure had said, GDO wasn't necessarily in support of this granting of personal leave. And I'll kind of go into a little bit of why that is in discussions with GDO. It's because they want to encourage the retirees to come back into service, but while we do that, we wanna be careful that we don't discourage new teachers or current teachers who aren't retirees in the public school system. Because I'll tell you that teachers are grumbling about a pay increase, you know. There was one that was granted several years ago and Guam Department of Education has the authority to review the teacher space, pay scales and make a determination about pay increases. But I'll tell you, when we pass this law with providing sick leave benefits for the retirees, I did hear from teachers who aren't retired, who are active employees, and the call was, what about us? As you guys know, it's, they say it's a thankless profession. And it's not entirely because of the kids who are Uggagua, right? Usually when you talk to these teachers, the retirees, that's the best part, the best memories that they have. I think the struggle really is the lack of support for teachers in the classroom from the Guam Department of Education leadership. I mean, any of us who have teachers in the family or who talk to teachers, it's very frustrating when they have to buy their own supplies, you know, they have to buy their own paper, they have to buy their own, many of them spend out of pocket to provide supplies for kids who don't have them. And in the meantime, what we hear from GDO leadership in these hearings is, oh, all they have to do is just tell their admin and their admin will get it. But, you know, when you talk to the teachers, it's like these requests fall on deaf ears. So it is a little bit of a balancing act to continue to support the teachers who are active in the classroom, who have not yet retired, while also providing those encouragements to the retirees. Because I think where GDO is coming from is they want to use the retirees to come back to supplement the active teacher corps, not necessarily supplant them. But I think with the shortages that we're facing, obviously, anything we can do to bring retirees or, you know, new teachers into the classroom, I think is very encouraging. And in fact, in the public hearing, there was something that Tim Fadinko from the Guam Federation of Teachers had proffered in this that, uh, Tim Fedenko from the Guam Federation of Teachers had proffered, and this was the idea of allowing, uh, retirees to maintain their teacher certification. So if we're looking to complete that, uh, piece of the puzzle, that may be something that the body, uh, would want to look at. But I want to thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to, uh, speak in support and also want to extend, uh, on the call, Sidoosmasi, to our retirees, not just the retired teachers in the Guam Department of Education, but all of the retirees across, uh, the government of Guam. As you guys know, we're facing a very critical juncture and there's, uh, in my opinion, there's a loss of a lot of institutional knowledge with some of these young'uns. So anytime you get these retirees to come in and provide that guidance and that experience, it definitely is a, a benefit. So Sidoosmasi, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the bill, anyone who wishes to speak on the bill? General Lady from John New Year, recognize me?
Sisusmasi, I stand in support of the bill. As the previous speaker said, Public Law thirty-eight seventeen already allowed for sick leave government-wide for retired employees who are brought back in. And, um, so that should be implemented immediately and it says it should be done as, as is done previously. Um, adding personal leave specifically for teachers, I'm in support of that. I, I think, uh, they still seem to have a need for these teachers and of course, retired teachers with all their experience are absolutely a benefit for their R students. Uh, I like how the Guam Federation of Teachers President Tim Fedenko said that, um, retired teachers have valuable input for the younger teachers. We don't represent them, but it is also a burden when we don't have enough teachers. The teachers we do represent carry on extra classes and class loads. So this helps alleviate that situation for our teachers who are not retired. And so I agree with that. And if, I at first was concerned that there might be some conflict or, you know, issues with the collective bargaining agreement, that we are incentivizing those outside of that collective bargaining agreement. But because the Federation of Teachers has no issue with this, so then I'm in full support. And, uh, I think our teachers, um, they're a special class and I think they deserve this special privilege of continued personal leave. Sidoosmasi.
Thank you very much, ma'am. On the bill, any other senator wishing to speak on the bill? Senator, great, beautiful senator from Baragada, ma'am, you recognize. No, I'm not talking about you, Vince, the, okay, the pretty senator. Okay, I, I, you're not beautiful, son, I'm sorry.
Good morning, buenas, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise today in full support of this measure. This is a very important measure, which seeks to address one of the most pressuring, pressing challenges facing our education, education system right now. This shortage of qualified teachers. Bill number forty-eight dash thirty-eight C O R provides a thoughtful, balanced approach to encouraging experienced retired teachers to return to our classrooms by offering them modest, non-accurring leave benefits that recognize their continued service without compromising the sustainability of our retirement system or education budget. We heard moving and practical testimony during the public hearing. Mr. Tim Fedenko of the Guam Federation of Teachers reminded us that our current educators are overwhelmed and that retired teachers, many of whom still want to serve, are an untapped resource. Providing them with basic leave protections, just like any other classroom teacher, is not only fair but necessary to support staffing's, uh, stability. Mr. Peter Alexis Ada of the Guam Board of Education shared an especially compelling example of a retired teacher who faced a serious medical issue but couldn't access shared leave. That's not just a policy gap, Mr. Speaker, that's a human cause that we must correct. Deputy Superintendent Dr. Barbara Adamas also underscored the impact of re-employing retirees. They bring not only expertise but also mentorship to the next generation of educators. They raise the quality of instruction and help steady the system during a time of recruitment difficulty. This bill's amendments reflect prudent safeguards. The leave provided does not accumulate indefinitely, cannot be cashed out, and does not count towards retirement. These are reasonable limits that protect our financial integrity while still making the teaching profession more attractive to those who are willing to return. So, Mr. Speaker, I thank the author of the bill and I thank him for the invitation, um, to co-sponsor it. If we are serious about improving our schools, supporting our students, and retaining quality educators, then we must invest in policies that make sense. Bill number forty-eight dash thirty-eight does, does exactly that. I respectfully urge my colleagues to support its passage. Sidoosmasi, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, ma'am. On the bill, on the bill, any other senators wishing to speak on the bill? If not, the handsome gentleman from Baragada, show you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and, uh, thank you to my colleagues, um, for the, for the support and, and, you know, just the encouragement, um, for this measure. Um, you know, the, when, when I first got into office, of course, this was one of the first things that I, you know, teacher shortage was one of the things that I wanted to address because, of course, my wife is a school counselor. She's, she's been in situations where she's had to, um, you know, sub, sub classes, um, take students into a cafeteria where they're supervising multiple classes because teachers call out. There's also a teacher shortage at the time. We've also heard earlier this year where, uh, because of the teacher shortage, students are, you know, put in the cafeteria at Southern High School where an incident has happened where parents, you know, or the police has been called. And so, you know, we're hoping with the, the passage of this measure, um, and, and also the previous measure that was, was passed earlier this year, that this helps address this shortage and, and incentivizes. I know there's still a lot more work to be done in regards to getting teachers to, to come back to the classroom after retirement. It's definitely a, a, uh, a thankless job. And, um, and again, I thank my colleagues for their support. And before I move this to the third reading file, I'd like to make an amendment, uh, motion to add some co-sponsors to the bill. So, Mr. Speaker, I move or I make a motion to add co-sponsors to the bill. I'd like to add Senator Telotai Tegui, Senator Vice Speaker Tony Ada, Senator Sean Gumatautau, anybody else? Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Chris Barnett, Senator, all senators present, Mr. Speaker. And we could add Senator Lohan one more time.
There is a motion to add, uh, as co-sponsors, all senators present who are, who are already not co-sponsors to the bill, as co-sponsors. Any objections? No objections, sort of.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And now I move to place Bill number forty-eight dash thirty-eight in the third reading file for voting.
Forty-eight dash thirty-eight is amended?
Has amended on the floor.
And substituted?
And substituted.
Okay, into the third reading.
Yes.
Any, any objections? No objections, sort of. Um, as... Was motion approved yesterday, last night, we are returning to Bill number seventy-dash-thirty-eight C O R. Senator Smagstein, you have the floor.
Miss, Mr. Speaker, um, there's others that need to speak on the bill. Uh, and we'll move for, with the amendments.
We, we, when we left seventy thirty-eight, we were at Senator Perez's.
That's correct.
That's, okay. I just wanted you to bring it back up so that I could do it over to her.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And we'll move now to the other amendments. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Senator Perez, ma'am, you still have the floor.
Good morning, Mr. Speaker. Um, thank you. Uh, I would like to, in regards to my amendment, I'd like to make the motion to change plan, uh, to parameters. So that's my amendment to this amendment. Yeah, if we can save paper. It's basically the initial amendment that states, uh, to add a new subsection D. Uh, G D O E shall develop a lease instead of plan parameters in consultation with the Guam Economic Development Authority, Department of Land Management, Department of Administration, and other government entities it deems that was added prior to solicitation, it deems necessary prior to solicitation. The reason being is that plan seems a little bit more inflexible, but, um, the idea is that, again, uh, that G D, G D O E should have a clear idea of what they want to get out of the leases and also to protect themselves. Should they want to, uh, utilize a properties, I know G D O E is in the, in the, um, they're in the, they're downsizing, right? And, but should they need that facility, uh, they should have the ability to, to use that facility. So it's about protecting the G D O E interests. That, that's what I believe the purpose of this bill, uh, is really to support G D O E in ensuring not only that they generate revenue, but that they have control over the facilities. Uh, I ask for my colleagues' support in, uh, making, making sure we have the right language, um, in protecting G D O E. Uh, as you know, G D O E is, um, is our largest, uh, part of the budget and, um, you know, anything we could do to help them because, uh, they're right now, they're, they're focused a lot on the operations of schools, you know, getting the sanitary permits, curriculum, um, you know, you, you name it. All of these things is a huge, it's a huge task. Um, adding additional tasks of leases, uh, I think we can support them. You know, just like during the, um, the last year or last school year, uh, we all had to come together to ensure that the schools open. And I feel that this is another one of those instances where we can come together to support G D O E to be successful in the leases so that they can gain more revenue. And it's really about just, uh, being more clear about what their intentions and what they expect to get out of these leases. Um, I ask for my colleagues' support in this. Thank you.
So can you repeat where G D U E shall develop?
Lease parameters.
Lease parameters?
Yes.
So the amendment, the statement then shall read, if G D U E shall develop lease parameters in consultation with G I D A, Land Management, Department of Administration, and other government entities as deemed necessary?
Necessary, yes.
Because that passed yesterday?
Correct, yes, thank you.
Okay. On the amendment, to strike out a lease plan and replace it with lease parameters. So G, G D U E shall develop lease parameters. Any discussion? Gentlemen from Gigo, show you recognize?
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, I, I just have a little bit of reservation when it towards the end. It says prior to solicitation. In other words, they can't move anywhere until they build their plan. And if their, and if their goal and there's people knocking on the door saying, we want to lease your property, well, we can't lease it to you, we can't do anything until we come up with a plan. I got some reservations that. G D U E's been here in business for a while and if we're so concerned about them raising funds to help fix the schools, all we're telling them is that, oh, no, you, you, you can't be concerned about that. Need to put the plan first, then this, then we'll, then we'll, then you can move from there. And I, I believe that, that may be, might be holding them back. And I just believe that that's, that's not a comfortable spot for me. Thank you.
So you object to this?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. General Lady from Tumurin, you recognize?
Thank you and good morning again, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, um, well, first I think, uh, we're going to strike out also when we did that amendment, uh, amendment to the amendment is to strike out develop A, so just strike out A, right? And just put Guam shall develop lease parameters in consultation with Guam, right? Okay, so we are striking out A just for the record. Mr. Speaker, I think this is a, a good compromise. We're not putting guidelines, we're putting parameters, which, I mean, uh, we're not putting, uh, plan, we're putting parameters, which also means guidelines. The last thing we want to do is to set up D O E for failure. And if we don't assist, and believe me, Mr. Speaker, how many times in the last two years, three years actually, that D O E has asked for assistance, especially from this administration? How many times have we tried to, uh, appropriate funding to D O E? It's reverted to the administration and never gets to D O E. What we're trying to do here is provide D O E, which does not have a very good track record when it comes to managing money, let alone property, property in which they came to the public hearing not even knowing what property they own. It's our responsibility in this body to ensure we give the assistance that D O E has been calling for, for the last three, four years to help them. The previous oversight chair of D O E has done nothing but help them almost holding their hands to try and get them on the right track, which we have done. Look at our schools now in the newspaper. What they're doing is advertising that schools have passed inspections, that inspections are being done regularly. That's something that's never been done before. And when they do these inspections, they notice what the deterioration of schools are becoming and address it right away because they will not be able to pass inspections. These are guidelines that this body had put in place to assist D O E because the administration is not helping them. So it's our responsibility to come up with guidelines to assist them. It's our responsibility to ask other entities that have experience, have experience in rentals, in procurement. That's all we're doing. We're not stepping on anyone's toes. We're not making it difficult for anybody to move forward on doing something. We want to make sure they're not set up for failure, but we are here to set them up for success. It's as simple as getting advice from the experts. It's as simple as that. You know, and, and that basically is all what we're doing to give them those tools. Go to these three entities in the government of Guam to help you. As deemed necessary for other entities, we made an amendment to this amendment that said to strike out prior solicit, I mean, uh, we incorporated other government entities as deemed necessary. So not just three, but D O E will have the access to every, you know, I don't even see D P W in here. And they, this would give them the opportunity to seek assistance from D P W as well. Let us set up D O E for success, not failure. Let's not tie their hands. Let's give them everything they need and keep an eye on them. Like the previous oversight chair of D O E has been doing for the last two years, we have cleaned up most of D O E. Now we're trying to find funding for them. Because when they ask Adalut for help, what do they get? So this is, this is a, not just a compromise, it's needed to assist. It's needed to assist DOE. Why stop that? Guidelines are important, my colleagues. SOPs are important. My time is up, so I thank you for the opportunity and ask my colleagues, let's support this. It's what they need. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, gentlemen from the, you recognize?
Si dos masia, Mr. Speaker. Manana si dos again to the people of Guam. Rising in reserve support for the amendment, and I'm just going to provide my perspective as to why. What the amendment seeks to do is involve the Guam Economic Development Authority, Department of Land Management, who I agree would be the agencies with the expertise in a manner like this. The superintendent in the public hearing said that DOE would seek the assistance of a realtor to lease out these properties. So I think that's kind of the issue here. Do we want to enlist these government agencies or do we want to allow DOE to go out and shop for a realtor? But I will say, and I want to thank the retiring speaker for her very encouraging words of support relative to the hard work that we collectively did as a body with unanimous support. So si dos masia for that. But it's been my experience that every time we try and get the administration's assistance for the Guam Department of Education, it comes at a cost, you know, the saga of the $20 million that we appropriated that was taken by the administration and stuck into a Typhoon Mawar relief fund black hole. Remember, DOE enlisted the assistance of the administration to procure the fencing and the mold mitigation. And, Mr. Speaker, to this day, that mold mitigation is not done. And it's my understanding that the bid for the fencing is just being completed. So we're talking about a multi-year effort where the Guam Department of Education has pretty much gone hat in hand to the administration and asked for the help. When we talk about inspection of the schools, this body basically had to bully the administration, had to shame the administration to form the sort teams to get out, to get off their chairs in Adalou and get out to the schools and help everyone who was trying to get these schools to open. So that's really my only reservation is that there are a lot of examples of DOE trying to enlist the assistance of the administration. Most recently, the Guam Department of Education asked Adalou for an emergency declaration so they could procure grass cutting services, and they got a hard no. So while I definitely value the expertise that GIDA and Department of Land Management would bring to this process, I say that in hoping that they really do bring that expertise. And it's not another one of these perverse, let's make the public school system suffer, which is kind of the vibe that I've gotten from Adalou over the last couple of years. You know, there's almost this vindictiveness towards the public school system, and what they need is the support, not just of the legislature. I think we've consistently shown here in the legislature that we do support the public schools, that we are engaged with the issues, that we're seeking those solutions. And I think that should be the same narrative and the same level of support that we're getting from Adalou. And I hope that if this amendment passes, that we truly see that sincere effort to see this through, Mr. Speaker. Si dos masia.
Thank you very much, sir. On the amendment to the amendment, on the amendment to the amendment. No other senators wishing to speak on the amendment to the amendment? Senator Sabina, you can close on the amendment to the amendment. Who wants to speak? Senator from, you recognize, Mr. Vice Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I get a 30-second recess real quick?
Okay, back from recess, Senator, Vice Speaker, you still have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, for my thirty-second recess and the additional recess for the proffering of this amendment, uh, but I'll yield to the author.
It's in the, okay, in the spirit of cooperativeness, that we do that, okay? Senator Perez, you're now recognized, ma'am.
This is Masi, uh, Mr. Speaker, and, um, so I'd like to, uh, withdraw my amendment and, uh, substitute it with a, a new amendment, proffer a new amendment.
There's a motion to would, to withdraw the amendment in its entirety. Any objections? No objections. Senator Perez is the other floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So I would like to proffer this amendment is, uh, would be to add a new subsection D to the, to the bill to read, D, GDOE shall develop lease parameters in consultation with the Guam Economic Development Authority, Department of Land Management, Department of Administration, and other government entities as deemed necessary.
On the amendment. On the amendment. Any way senators wishing to speak on the amendment? No? Any objections to the amendment? No objections to the amendment? So ordered. Any other senators wishing to speak on the bill as amended? Good senator from Tumuning, sir, you have recognition.
This is Masi, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I certainly rise in support of this bill. But before I make some comments, um, unfortunately, last night I had a prior commitment, wasn't able to return after the dinner break. And unfortunately, I reviewed the session and one of my amendments passed, but one did not. And so at this time, I'm going to ask for reconsideration of the actions of the body. And this is on Amendment A B seventy C M D L eighteen dash twenty P two and the double I afterwards. Uh, it was put in at seven twenty-eight, uh, twenty twenty-five, that's the date at seven oh four P M. And it's the amendment once again, uh, to amend. Page two, line eighteen to twenty to read, uh, C, uh, section C. A lease amount of any property leased under this section shall be a minimum of ninety percent of appraised value of the property at the time such lease is executed, except when the prospective lease is an educational institution or government agency, provided that the lease for said prospective lease requires cash payments. So this time I make that motion, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion to reconsider the actions of the body on an amendment, um, labeled A B seven zero C M D L eighteen dash twenty P two and I I, or two. Okay, there is an objection to the motion to reconsider. All those in favor of reconsidering the actions of the body on that, on this amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I know that the amendment was debated, so I'd just like to go to the vote, uh, vote on the amendment.
Okay, there is a motion.
So we are debating, we are voting on the, on the amendment now again, right? Because we reconsidered.
Yes. So there is a motion, okay, to vote on the amendment. There has been an objection.
What?
Also call for a roll call, Mr. Speaker.
If we're going to reconsider this, Mr. Speaker, then we should debate it. Because again, this is the, this is the provision that gives DOE the per, the ability to lease out for one dollar.
No, it doesn't.
Well, this is a debatable motion.
Set the ceiling.
Okay, there is, this is a debatable motion. And I'm just calling that, that this is now what the question before the body. That there is the, there is a motion, okay? Basically, on this, on this amendment. Okay, and with that, it's a debatable motion, so therefore it opens it to do, to, to a debate.
That's fine, Mr. Chair. I'll let the debate begin.
Yes, sir. On the motion. On the motion, are there any senators wishing to speak on the motion, on the amendment? I want General Lady from Dona, you recognize.
Yeah, so this amendment says that, um, well, the bill says that DOE shall lease their properties for a minimum of ninety percent of the appraised value of the property at the time of the lease. But this amendment adds in the words, except when the prospective lessee is an educational institution or government agency. Provided that the lessee requires cash payments. I don't know what other currency they're going to use other than cash. That's how, I mean, the government of Guam operates, but, um, I just don't understand why we're allowing DOE to improve its finances by leasing its property and then we're going to tell them, but you can actually make special deals with other educational institutions or government agencies and lease it out for less than its value. Then I just I'm just gonna wait.
I apologize.
No, no problem. All right. And, uh, so we're, it, this amendment clearly allows DOE to lease out for less than its property. And a, one of the big issues that the proponent of the bill said is that this will not allow, this bill will not allow for special deals or sweetheart deals or any type of, uh, questionable deals. And if we're just looking for property for the government of Guam, that should not be the burden of DOE. DOE still has needs for schools. It could be using ten million dollars to refurbish this school into a middle school. Uh, at Chief Brody, for example, as opposed to, let's just give it to a government agency and let them use it for nothing. Why would we do that? It just seems to counteract the whole intention of the bill. And then I, I, this was not at all at the public hearing that we're going to allow them to do it for less than its value. This is Masi.
Thank you. On the bill, on the amendment, gentlemen from Tumuning, you recognize. Gentlemen from Tumuning, sir? On, okay, this is just on the amendment. Okay, on the amendment. Okay, no other senators, Senator from Dona, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, uh, for the opportunity to arise, uh, an objection of the amendment. Uh, I think the retiring speaker covered all the bases. The intent of this bill is a very, uh, noble intent. It's one that, you know, I support, allowing the Guam Department of Education to lease out their facilities, uh, at ninety percent of the appraised, uh, value. You know, last night we already passed an amendment that would allow uh, an educational institution, uh, to use legislative appropriations to pay their rent. So I'm not sure I understand, um, this effort to kind of whittle down, uh, that cost because, uh, they could afford it. And it's been covered, uh, Mr. Speaker. So again, out of one side of our mouth with this bill, we're saying we want to give DOE the ability to lease out their properties so that they can generate revenue, so they don't have to come here to this body that's trying to cut all these taxes. And they could have some semblance of autonomy when it comes to running all these facilities, leasing all these facilities. So I don't understand why out of the other side of our mouth, we're trying to cook up a sweetheart, uh, deal when any entity that's out there, we all know which entity we're talking about, uh, can afford to pay this rent. And, you know, a GDOE has been undersold by our government for so long. I think that we need to allow the department to assert itself to get, I mean, we're not even saying a hundred percent of the value. We're talking about ninety percent of the appraised value. And I'm not sure that's necessarily an appraisal of the land that, uh, the school or the facility sits on, or more an appraisal related to what types of uses, which I'm assuming will be very narrow, uh, these properties, uh, could be available for. So object to the amendment, uh, Mr. Speaker. This is Masi.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, on the amendment, General Lady from Tumuning, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, I was thinking about the charter schools. It said any other educational facility, right? Um, and I know that the Guam Charter School, uh, Academy was, had issues or other charter schools had issues that this particular school was given an advantage of not having to pay rent or that their facility was covered. Now, if DOE decides to pick a charter school and, and give them a rent of one dollar a month, which they can do, you know, basically, in this amendment, then what about the other charter schools? Now you're going to create a frenzy amongst other charter schools. Why are you favoring this charter school and not that charter school? Um, what about government agencies? You know, you're favoring this government agency over what? And, and who's influencing DOE? That's the one thing I've learned in procurement class, that you take away the influence from other ones who have special interests or can provide that, you know, uh, opportunity to turn the neck or turn the head with the neck on the other side and look the other way. No, you take away all those influences and you set parameters that we talked about, guidelines in place for everybody to follow, which makes it fair across the board. Putting something like this in there does not provide an equal playing field at all. It provides, what it does provide is a room to either be, you know, put favoritism into one side and provide room for being forced to have this one government agency take up this property when the whole nemesis of this bill was to help DOE with funding. Over two hundred million dollars goes to DOE, almost three hundred million. One of the largest of our budget goes there. And here's an opportunity that's been used in other states granted. But they have guidelines to ensure fairness when they're leasing out. So I, I just think that this amendment is, is just providing, um, an avenue of shenanigans going on. So, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, on the amendment, General Lady from Agate, ma'am, you recognize.
I think it's more of a point of inquiry, right, a question for the mover of this amendment. If you could please explain, why this exception is needed and also what assurances you can provide, uh, to this body, um, related to some of the concerns that were raised uh, yesterday regarding the potential that GDOE can go out and lease, um, property for a dollar.
Would a gentleman yield to the question?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. There's nothing in this that escapes from the ceiling with the exception of the ninety percent, as well as government to government or government to charter school arrangements. It's, the ceiling's already set. There, there's nothing in here that says you can lease for a dollar. It needs to be permissive when you're going and you're leasing. You already have market values established within the bill. You have their, what they have to do going forward in establishing the lease. But one of the other things, Mr. Chair, is we have a situation now where charter schools are, are screaming and, and those that would, would come in to be, uh, that, that have, that can provide great education for our children. Right now, the ceilings and the caps on other schools are being asked to be raised. If, if they had a reduced rent, because right now you're talking about paying into the educational system, which charter is to provide education. You have other government entities right now that are looking for property. And the issue is, what are they going to do? They're going to go out and they're going to finance. And then they're going to pay a finance charge and they're going to be financing, which is going to cost the government more money because nothing's for free. No matter what, these government agencies that aren't autonomous, that don't generate their own revenue, get a subsidy from this legislature, so it's fungible. It's one hand or the other. What we're trying to do is to make sure we, these properties, other than those that would be, have the commercial value, have the ability for the DOE to manage across the board, but considerations also for government and schools. And so I just don't see anything there. You need to be expressed and explicit when you allow for, this is your value. When a value has a ceiling and has a range, the only thing you're doing is moving from the absolute ninety percent. This is Masi, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ma'am, does that answer your question?
Point of information, Mr. Speaker.
First, I need to be able, ma'am, does that answer your question? Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. What is your point of information?
Yeah, point of information is the previous speaker said that the market values are set in the bill and they will not be changed by this amendment, but that's false and contrary to the words of the amendment that say this is, this is the value, ninety percent of appraised value, except when, it makes a huge exception. So there is no minimum set by the bill of this amendment pass. There's no minimum.
I dispute that point of view. I just disagree. And, and as, as I said, the, the lease amounts that are set are set by the requirements that this bill calls for, many other amendments that were just put in to call for that. But you can go below the ninety percent for charter schools. But you can go below the 90% for charter schools and for government offices.
Thank you very much.
Point of information, Mr. Speaker, the, the offer of the amendment is, is being deceptive in that he keeps talking about a ceiling, but the amendment doesn't mention a floor. And that's the concern, is the floor could be a dollar. The floor could be 50 cents. There's no bottom range to this, Mr. Speaker. So with due respect, just wanted to share that with the people of Guam.
Thank you very much for the point of view. Any other senator on the amendment, on the amendment? Okay. Senator Parrish, you recognize?
Yeah, I stand in opposition to this amendment for that very reason, that, you know, the really the intent, it goes against even the intent of the bill. If you look at the intent of the bill, that it states that in addition to addressing current infrastructure issues, leasing property offers a sustainable long-term strategy for GDOE. It allows for greater operational efficiency with the department having the ability to quickly secure and adapt properties as educational needs evolve. And so here we, here we are talking, we're in the middle of, you know, conditions that are beyond our control in the national scene where the administration is going to cut Department of Education. And so we have to come up with solutions locally. We are the ones that have to provide funding should the federal funding not fall through. And what's at stake? Head start. Programs that educate our children, that is the foundation of our society. We just heard earlier, teachers are even asking, looking to, for a raise. And it's really critical that we be consistent. If we are going to support education, let's assure that they're going to be provided a minimum of 90% of the lease and not second guessing whether we're going to get even a dollar because other arrangements were made. And if we're talking about Chief Brody, there are some liabilities there. There are liabilities where Gura put money into those Head Start classrooms. And should it change hands or should it change any kind of, to another lessy? DOE may have to pay back those funds that was put into the development of the Head Start, Head Start classroom. So let's not rush into this. Let's give DOE 90%, which is a B in, you know, in some schools, not an F. You know, I think, you know, let's be reasonable here. You know, and let's be honest with ourselves. Are we here to support DOE in the midst of looming cuts? Are we going to stand behind loss of programming for our children? You know, we talk about shortage of teachers. Let's be consistent if we're going to support education. So I stand in opposition to this amendment, to the amendment. Thank you, or this amendment.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, on the amendment, any other senators wishing to speak on the amendment? No other senators? Senator Duan, she want to close?
All those.
Okay. 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 On the amendment, there has been an objection. All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. One, two, three. On the bill, Senator Lohan, Senator from Tumuning, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Speaker and colleagues. You know, we're in challenging times and the nice thing about, or I guess the bright side of challenging times is that it gets our productive juices going, right? And it's time to think out of the box and try to look at stuff that we haven't done before or that we just recently have done. So today, Mr. Speaker, I, I rise to speak on the issue that's right in front of us, of course, quite literally, of course, Chief Brody Memorial School has been decommissioned, right? And if we take a moment to reflect on this recent history, of course, just look at FQ Sanchez Elementary. You know exactly what happened. I mean, it's undergoing rehab now. It's under the, the mayor's office, but they're still looking for, for funding. And it's still closed at, at this point. I mean, I think we had an opportunity this last, the 37th, to tour this, the, the facility and, and the, the work that's going on at, at this point. The reality is, Mr. Speaker, as a GovGuam and, and DOE simply do not have the funds to maintain and upkeep even our operating schools, let alone those who are no longer, that are no longer in use. So the question is, what happens to Chief Brody? Let me remind each and every one of you where the school is located, right in the heart of Tumuning, right along the route that every tourist passes, whether you're heading to the airport or to the hotel. Bad enough as it is right now, as you go down JFK Hill to the right, you have an abandoned hotel there. And thank you to my colleague, of course, vice speaker, who introduced a bill again to hold these property owners, again, to account for derelict buildings. We cannot allow this facility to become an eyesore, not in our economic gateway to our island, Mr. Speaker. I want to be clear that I support the previous proposal to set 90% of the appraised value as a floor for any lease agreement. That's a strong safeguard to make sure we don't undervalue public property. But I'd like to also propose, I don't have this amendment form, Mr. Speaker, I just want us to, to kind of think about it and digest it. If feasible, maybe we can put it in amendment form. I'd like to propose something that allows us to be more strategic, especially when it comes to education. If any entity is interested in leasing a GDOE facility or educational, for educational purposes, I propose we allow a dollar-for-dollar offset on lease payments for any investments that they make in the facility, facilities improvement or maintenance. And think about it. Children get a safe, clean and functional space to learn. DOE will eventually get back the building that's in better shape than the one that was handed over. And the taxpayers won't have to absorb the costs of the deterioration, security or even the eventual demolition. This is a win-win situation. It's about being smart stewards of public property. If we can't maintain it, let's partner with those who can, especially if it continues to serve our children and our future. When I say thinking out of the box, we just did this for the Port Authority. They'll be revealing their master plan, but the master plan is, that's all it is, a master plan. When are we going to undertake really putting up these infrastructures with no money? If we partner up wisely, with a dollar-for-dollar offset, it can get us there faster, at a faster rate. So that's my proposal. I, I don't have it in, in amendment form, but it's something that I think we kind of digest and, and, and look whether it's feasible. I think it is. We partner up and there, there are companies that, that want to do this. So it's a thought. We did it in previous session. And actually, you know, in the last board meeting at the, or actually the first face-to-face board meeting the port had a couple of weeks ago, the company came out and, and showed their plan and what they were, what they were going to do. And it's great because it's not going to cost the people of Guam any money and neither is the port. And the, the port will inherit a facility that was built without taxpayer money. And again, it's a dollar-for-dollar offset. So this is a proposal that I'm, I'm throwing out there. And if we can digest it, it's going to take a while to, to, to put an amendment together for that because it took a while to put that bill together. But it's something that maybe we ought to digest and look at the feasibility. But we can't allow, again, any more schools to be decommissioned and deteriorate because that's what's going to happen. And if we don't partner up at this point, we're looking for dollars. Unless we partner up, it's not going to happen. Our tourism numbers are not looking good. So if we partner up at this point, I think it'd go a long ways for the people of Guam to get out of the rut that, that we're in at this point. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much.
Point of inquiry, Mr. Speaker, just.
What's your point of inquiry?
The previous speaker spoke about a, a proposal that has been made to DOE regarding a dollar-for-dollar, I, I'm not familiar with that. If he could just tell us who we're talking about?
No, he was offering the proposal.
No, I'm offering a proposal. I say we can digest it. It's a proposal I'm making. And no, no.
I thought you said there was already a proposal to DOE.
No, 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 no. What I, what I said, Mr. Speaker, was we acted on legislation in the last session at the Port Authority and, you know, I'm, I'm putting out a proposal that we can try to digest, but no, I'm, no, I have no idea what has been proposed to DOE at all. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. On the bill, as amended, gentleman from Talafolfo, show your recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for this opportunity this morning to offer comments on Bill 70. Mr. Speaker, many school districts throughout the nation are faced with the need to finance the construction, renovation or repair of public school facilities, among other things. In 2025, there has been a tectonic shift in federal education policy. School districts across America are having to move with the times. Guam is no different. We cannot rely anymore on what has been viewed by education leaders across our island and many in this room as federal school dollar entitlement. When we were given a chance to infuse these particular resources in our public schools over the past 20 years, we collectively squandered them. In 2025, we are now forced to go back to the basics. Funds are limited. The usage of education funds from any source must have a purpose. The taxpayers of Guam are watching each and every step of this. My colleagues throughout the debate on this bill have reiterated that point throughout this morning and last night. We will not waste them today, Mr. Speaker. We cannot afford to. I say that Bill 70 takes a bold step forward, not a step backwards, at this critical juncture in our delivery of elementary and secondary educational school services. Mr. Speaker, I appreciate that the amended version directs revenue earned through any lease established through the bill's provisions shall be deposited into an account separate and apart from the general fund and that expenditures from this new reasonable funding source shall be approved via resolution of the Guam Education Board. Mr. Speaker, according to GDOE's school facility master plan that was issued in May of 2022, the department has 40 operational public school sites, six high schools, eight middle schools and 26 elementary schools, and six of the schools are leased schools designed, financed, built and maintained by a third party, and yes, done via a lease. GDOE is wholly responsible for facility management of 34 of those schools. The total inventory at the 34 GDOE-maintained schools is over 3.3 million square feet with an estimated replacement value of $817 million. Mr. Speaker, GDOE's student population continues to decline. According to GDOE's Citizen Centric report, FY 2023, student enrollment for this, a school year 2022 to 2023, total 25,648. That's a decrease of 971 students or 4% from the previous school year. Now, since school year 2020 to 2021, just two school years ago from that, GDOE experienced a reduction in student enrollment of 3,164 students or 11%. In the event GDOE facilities become available for lease or for rent, a policy must be implemented to maximize the use of these government assets. I believe Bill 70 is that policy. It is a significant start to infuse funds to support education. And now, while I appreciate that there's ongoing discussion among GDOE leadership on, and was very limited, as we heard in the public hearing, on the idea of generating revenue from unused GDOE properties by leasing these assets to outside organizations, my position is that these public properties should also be used for other government agencies which remain without permanent homes and are costing every single one of our taxpayers an increasing amount of money every single year for rent. Mr. Speaker, the Office of Public Accountability issued OPA report number 1702 in January of 2017, analyzing government of Guam leases. The report found that in just a little over a decade, the government of Guam nearly doubled its annual cost for leasing commercial space, going from $6.8 million in FY 2004 to $12.5 million in FY 2015. Now, since 2005, the OPA has urged the legislature to begin evaluating whether or not it is feasible to initiate long-term planning to acquire or build facilities to house government entities for the future. Mr. Speaker, with an opportunity before us to prioritize the use of potentially available GDOE facilities for other public services, I believe that this is a good starting point for us as decision makers and policymakers at all levels to develop a pathway to transition certain government operations into these, well, non-used government assets moving forward. If approved, Bill 70 will allow GDOE to determine whether any of its facilities, which are decommissioned in the immediate future, would meet the space and infrastructure requirements, maybe of an agency that's currently renting from the private sector. It could be, as one of our colleagues mentioned, could be someone in this room as part of our branch that could possibly use some space, if you will. Mr. Speaker, I, I know I'm running out of time, but I think about what I mentioned in the public hearing. We have even sports facilities. I use Southern High School as a good example. It's a mess. Couldn't we perhaps lease it to private organizations where they can put infused money and then use those facilities for a bigger purpose, to give our kids a chance to go out and maybe play a game or to maybe perhaps have a safer environment to train in that other community teams or groups can use? And I think this is just that, one of those pathways. I like Southern High School only because it's nearby. And it's been in discussions for years. And all we've seen is because of a lack of attention, a lack of priority, is a great facility that's gone down the toilet. And it can be given back to others who would care, who would care right now and get it up and running. Mr. Speaker, thank you for the opportunity this morning to add my observations on Bill 70 for the record, and I look forward to any additional comments that be offered for the balance of this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. On the bill as amended, on the bill as amended, any other senators wishing to speak on the bill as amended? Gentlelady from Zonia, you recognize, ma'am? General Lady from Joina, your recognizance, ma'am.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Speaker, colleagues. So the bill, as written, if we follow the intent, is to benefit GDOE, to assure that while GDOE is facing huge, huge issues, loss of federal funding, maintenance issues that pre that remain, starting up the new school year, teacher shortages, so many issues, lawsuits, that this bill, according to its intent, was intended to benefit GDOE so that in the end it could better its facilities, better its services to the children. That's the original intent of the bill. And that, of course, I support. But if the bill turns into a pillage of GDOE assets to benefit other government of Guam expenses, then I don't necessarily agree with that. And I think we should have another hearing on that if that's what's going to occur. But as the bill currently stands, it's still for the benefit of GDOE. There's a minimum involved of what the board is allowed to rent out for. It gets the advice of financial experts in our community, including GIDA and DOA. And so I hope that they will come up with a good deal because the bill requires a lot of trust in the board. These people who are going to make this decision of what's a good deal for the government of Guam or actually what's a good deal for the Department of Education, they're gonna be making this decision while we have students and parents who continue in double session. They continue to face issues at schools, even though they've passed sanitary inspection, they still require huge maintenance, huge improvements. As the superintendent is fond of saying, they're over 50 years old, these schools, so many of them. And we've just had to prioritize the worst cases as opposed to all of the needs that they actually have. We've had the Tamooning mayor and the Tamooning Municipal Planning Council for years ask for a central middle school. And superintendent says, yes, that is needed in order to cut the time that these people, the students from Tamooning are riding buses to PD. So these are options that I hope the board is going to take very seriously before it agrees to rent out any property that it could convert to a middle school and it could use for the thousands of students of Department of Education. And that it could use to alleviate double sessions for FB Leon Guerrero that still is in double session. Or Sanchez. It's just, this was what we talked about at the hearing, is is they have enough to focus on at GDOE. If they want to start renting out facilities, I just just hope this doesn't turn into, um, you know, something that's really not intended at all according to the bill. So, um, I I'd like to start, I have a couple amendments for this bill, and I'd just like to start with, um, one that's not written, and that is, if you look at the composition of the members of this procurement team that's going to agree to leases for the Department of Education, it's the superintendent, the chief financial officer of DOE, and three members of the board. I really think what this procurement team needs is a procurement expert. There's none. And the superintendent said at the hearing he has, this is not his field. He needs an expert. So I would suggest, as we do with all procurements, that it instead of the maybe the chief financial officer, that it's the chief procurement officer of DOE. So I'd just like to change that one word, if you would allow me, Mr. Speaker, to make that motion without putting in writing. Where on page two, line 10, it says that instead of chief financial officer, chief procurement officer.
On the motion to change the chief financial officer to is changing the word financial to procurement, so it'll be the chief procurement officer. On the motion to change that, change it out, any senators wishing to speak? Any objection to changing out chief financial officer to chief procurement officer? No objection? Sure.
Sisus Massey, Speaker and colleagues. All right, the next amendment is, um, to add in the words, this is a page, I mean, sorry, line three, page two, I'm adding on subsection A, it says their DOE's authorized to lease properties within its jurisdictions. I'm adding in the words, if the school cannot be used to alleviate double sessions. Maybe should say if the property cannot be used to alleviate double sessions.
Stop the clock. Who's here?
Subsection A.
Before we do that, we just need to make sure that the 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 language here is, it reflects already what has been previously passed.
Oh.
So it consists of, where it says here seven, it is actually now five.
Yeah, it should be three. Yeah, no, this was prepared last night.
I just wanted to make sure, yes. All right. So the amendment is to add the words, after jurisdiction is at, add the words, if the school cannot be used to alleviate double sessions. Okay, so on the second line. This is amendment AB 70 TMT L 3-15 P 2. Okay? Any discussions on the amendment? It's gonna read that Guam Department of Education is hereby authorized to lease properties within within its jurisdiction if the school cannot be used to alleviate double sessions. Any discussions on the amendment? Any discussions on the amendment? No discussion on the amendment? Any objection to the amendment? There is an objection to the amendment. All right. You want to you want to close on the amendment before I call for the vote?
Yes, just very briefly. Again, this is because I don't know if everyone in here has felt the wrath of the parents and the students who are in double session. And if that's not going to be the priority of our legislature to get them out of double session and into schools of their own, then I don't know what this bill's for. And so this was only to emphasize, remind the board, remind the public that, yes, we recognize that you are still in double sessions, and that is our priorities to get you to alleviate the double session situation, that is curbing their activities, their learning. You've heard it all. It shouldn't be have to be explained. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. General Lady for joining your recognizance, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you so much for the, um, the opportunity to run, uh, to rise in support of this amendment. I mean, I think if you if you really think about this, this bill actually can get out of hand. DOE could look at, okay, this is a moneymaker for us. This is a way for us to make some money to lease out these pro these properties. And it actually can make them say, okay, we're just in for it to make money rather than actually take care of our students and their needs. So if there is an opportunity here for that, or an opportunity to make priority in this bill, then the priority should be the students, not making money, but the students. So if we can put in the legislation to make sure that the board or the the group of individuals make these choices, that the first priority priority is students. It's not always about making money, my colleagues. It's what's in the best interest of our students. So I think this amendment is is needed. Make sure the main goal is to take care of our students. And that's what this amendment does, puts them as priority. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, on the amendment, there has been an objection. Senator from Talav, uh, Joina, your recognizance.
Sisus Massey, uh, Mr. Speaker, just wanted to, uh, provide a little bit of a perspective on on the amendment and also just I have yet to speak on the bill. That's more of a reminder of myself. Uh, but we talk about the parents who have felt the brunt of the double sessions. My son Channing, uh, attended FB Leon Guerrero, and his first year of middle school, FB went under construction. And at the time, uh, it was the superintendent was Francis Santos, and it was said that, oh, it's gonna take six months. And that six months stretched into three years. And so my boy Channing was over at Ucadu High School in a double session for his entire middle school career. And now my son Chase just attended orientation at FB Leon Guerrero, which is over at Ucadu because they're still in a double session for this school year. And so I agree, if there are facilities out there that can be used to alleviate the double sessions, then they should be used to alleviate the double sessions. The issue really is, is that the Guam Department of Education, through its board, voted to extend the double sessions for another year. The other double session is Simon Sanchez. And now the remedy for that double session is gonna be the construction of a new Simon Sanchez campus or a temporary facility. There's been a lot of discussion on that, but it's never really come to light. But with FB Leon Guerrero, it's anticipated that since DOE has got back some of these reimbursements, and although they did tell us in a public hearing that they were going to issue a stop work order on all of the refurbishment, uh, projects, it's my understanding that the work has never stopped. So while completion of the work at FB was supposed to be done in six months, you know, over three years ago, we're now anticipating and and discussion with DOE, seeing FB Leon Guerrero hopefully open before the end of the upcoming, uh, school year. But it is frustrating when you have properties within GDOE that are are closed down, whether it's Chief Brody, right? And, uh, one of the retiring speakers had talked about the mayor, Mayor Luis Rivera, who's been one of the big proponents of converting, uh, Chief Brody to a middle school. But that process, according to GDOE, would come at a cost of $10 million. And so that's why Chief Brody was never entertained as an option for use of double session, whether it's with FB Leon Guerrero. There was, there was a real small window where there was some discussion about possibly getting Sanchez at Chief Brody and sharing the facilities with JFK. But that never came to light because when you talk to GDOE, they're very firm in saying that an elementary school is designed for elementary school students, and a middle school, the layout, the design, the high schools, the secondary schools are obviously a little different, uh, than the schools for our little nanny boys and and nanny girls. And so in the event that there are facilities available for GDOE to alleviate these double sessions, they should work towards alleviating the double sessions. The problem is, they don't want to. And that's the issue. They extended these double sessions. We've implored DOE to to look at all of the options on the table to end these double sessions because it's not just about inconvenience. I mean, we are forcing our school kids, whether they're students of Simon Sanchez and JFK or students of FB and Ucadu, to accept an inadequate standard for their education. If you're in a double session at FB, you go to school at 12, you come home when it's dark. Meanwhile, we have students in the double session at Simon Sanchez and JFK going to school so early in the morning that it's still dark. And so it's really upon the Guam Department of Education to look at the the properties that are in their inventory, and if they are available, consider using them for alleviation of the double session. So I just wanted to kind of give my perspective on on the amendment, sir, and just the issue in general, and I'll speak on the bill later. So Sisus Massey, Mr. Speaker, and I support the amendment.
Thank you. On the amendment, on the amendment, as proffered, there has been an objection. General Lady from Beragadi, your recognizance.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, and so as a former, uh, teacher of Simon Sanchez High School, I do retain close ties with many of the the staff there. And it has been agonizing, um, as well as the JFK teachers. Um, it's been agonizing for the staff as well as the parents and the community that have to sacrifice such changes in, uh, adjusting, uh, to teaching. It also shortchanges, um, the, I believe, it shortchanges the 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 students of as far as, um, you know, whether academics is concerned or even extracurricular activities. Um, we've heard many issues about how, uh, students have to practice, um, you know, they they're looking for places to practice, and it really creates a barrier. And if anything, it creates inequity within our school system. You know, for too long, our northern villages of Jigo, Dedido, Tamooning, and even Central Village of Tamooning have been hampered with, uh, double sessions. This is should not be the norm. We should not accept this as a norm for schools. And if anybody has ever experienced double sessions would know this. And so I I stand in full support of this amendment. And the other thing is, if we don't have, if we don't alleviate double sessions, what about, you know, what's the op option? Do we have to start paying money for lease? So that would definitely counter the effect of this bill. So to me, it makes perfect sense. It responds to the needs of our community. They even created a mural up north because they they're completely frustrated with the situation that they're in. Again, let's be consistent. If we say we're for education, let's be consistent about supporting our school community.
Thank you very much. On the amendment as, oh, on the amendment, on the amendment, there has been an objection to the amendment. Any other person, senator wishing to speak on the amendment? No other person? Senator, just to lie, you want to close?
I just want to say, yes, this amendment would allow the board to just make a determination. So it would not prevent them from leasing it out, but it would it would force them to make a determination, a public one, one that they can back up. Thank you. And and I think that's what we owe those people, those students and parents who are in double sessions. Sisus Mas.
Thank you very much. There has been an objection to the amendment. So therefore, all individuals, all senators, okay, in support of the amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. Please indicate by raising your hand. One, two, three, four. Amendment fails. Senator Bora, your recognizance.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And, Mr. Speaker, um, with with just the the, um, some of the proposals and and some of the And, Mr. Speaker, with, with just the, some of the proposals and some of the amendments has been made, I think I'd like to make a motion, or not, I think, I, I'm going to, go ahead.
Sorry, point of order. Are we, do I get to finish, or?
We're going to go ahead. She just still has some time.
Oh, you, Mr. Chair, to the committee chair.
Mr. Speaker, I was going to make a motion to move the bill back to committee.
On the motion to move the bill back to committee, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Let's take a one-minute recess. We are now, colleagues, we're now in the, into the second round, okay, of the bills. And so the next one up is going to be Bill number 5-38. But we're going to go ahead and take a break for lunch. But also, just in this, there has been an agreement, and I have agreed to it, that there's going to be a switch in as far as a bill between Senator Perez and Senator Tello. Okay, and that, but that will be discussed when we get back in. Bill what? 161?
154.
1, 154. Okay, in place of Bill 16. But that will be, so you can, you can prepare. But with that, because there is a presentation that's going to be provided, so colleagues can make your way there, we'll go ahead and take a break for lunch, and we'll be back at, we'll make, back at 1, we need to be back at 1:30. Please, okay? 1:30? Okay? Break for lunch, recess until 1:30. Thank you very much.